Welcome to this conversation today about digital equity, inclusion, leadership, possibly a bit of technology and any other subject that we get on to. I'm Jamie, I'm the chairman of C-Learning, a leading digital transformation specialist, and I have the privilege of working with some amazing people all over the world who are doing really impactful things with technology. And I'm going to introduce you to somebody who's doing that in a few minutes. But before I do, allow me to introduce my colleague and co-host for the day, Mark. Do you want to introduce yourself?
Of course. So my name's Mark Truing. I'm the Managing Director of the Focus Training Group. We're an independent training provider based across the south coast from Bristol all the way to Land's End, offering apprenticeships and all kinds of business-led solutions, supporting young people, but also people wanting to retrain at later stages in life. And anybody who needs upskilling, really, that's what we do. Alongside that, I've worked with Jamie for a number of years now. It's growing exponentially at the minute on digital transformation projects. I've been in further education and higher education and schools for 25 years now and the third sector, and digital's been a passion of mine. So I've led organisations through digital transformation through using tech for good and trying to get tech to work for us rather than we work for it. So I'm really intrigued about your journey, Jess, and the kinds of things you've been up to. Inclusion's really close to my heart as well, so that's me.
Echo that, Mark, completely. Thanks, Mark. And Jess, do you want to just introduce yourself?
Okay, so how do you follow that? Jess Black, I'm the Digital Inclusion Lead of the South East County Council. I've been in the role for two and a half years now. Prior to that, I worked in Skills Commissioning, which focused around digital. And I have a background in working with vulnerable people and careers and employability and teaching at undergraduate masters level. And the golden thread is helping people, I think.
Wonderful. We need more people doing that, Jess. So welcome and thanks so much for putting some time aside to join this conversation today. I should say, just for practical reasons, should any of our internet connections drop off or be freeze or anything, at least there's three of us on the call. So it'd be really bad luck if we all froze at the same time. But if it does, we'll just rejoin within a few seconds, so it's not a problem. But thanks for joining us today. And I love that intro, by the way, in terms of helping people. This is probably why we get on from the first time we met, actually, because ever since I've met you and got to know you a bit better, your passion and enthusiasm for making the world a little bit better, if I can put it that way, comes across in everything that you do and everything that you're sort of about. And so I thought we might start a little bit by digging into that. And I suppose the question is, where's it come from? Is this just something that you just feel drawn to do? Was there a pivotal moment in your life or something that nudged you towards a digital inclusion kind of mission and a wider equality mission as well, based on what you just shared as well? What sort of got you into it, I suppose?
So social injustice, I don't like it. I don't think it should exist. And that's like the general reason why I've kind of come into this space. I was a commissioner, as I mentioned, for skills for quite some time, but also working in higher education. Mark, you'll know this, there's a very sort of quiet assumption made about people's digital skills. And it's brushed under the carpet a little bit, so nobody wants to ask for help. And so the commissioning that was trying to focus on kind of looking at breaking down some of those barriers, and it's actually quite hard. And then I kind of moved across into digital inclusion as a secondment. And I just realised how closely this is connected to poverty. It's multifactorial. It's a wicked issue. And I love a big wicked issue. I like asking the hard questions. But I also like the space and the opportunity to be creative around how I tackle some of those things. And I like to move the needle, as you know, Jamie. And that's really important for me is like, you know, what is the impact that we can make for people, not just in one space? Because as I've said, this is multifactorial. You've got to take a lot of things into account. And so that's how I kind of came into this area. Somebody asked me, he's really quite senior in DSET recently at an event, put me on the back foot a little bit. So I said, oh, you're cheeky sausage when I spoke to him afterwards. But he said to me, will we solve digital inclusion? And I said, solve poverty, maybe? And so, yeah, it's a very interesting space to be in, lots of amazing people. But for me, we have to work together. And I still think we've got a little bit of difficulty around that. So yeah, that's how I've kind of come into this space.
Wonderful. I think we'll probably dig into some of those themes in a bit through some of the later discussion points we move on to. Because I know that you, ever since we first met, it's perfectly obvious to me that you're one of life's very talented connectors. You join the dots with people, you bring people together, and you also have a real focus about what you're trying to achieve as well, I think it's fair to say, which is why it's impactful, I think, what you're doing. But we'll probably dig into some of that a little bit later on. But Mark, I'll let you ask the next discussion point.
Sure. So given, you know, everything you've described in your golden thread of helping people. And I like the fact that you touched just very briefly there that there's a system approach to this as well. That it's a system, a whole system will make a difference and not one particular activity. So I'd be keen to explore that in a bit. But just so we can set the scene and for folks kind of looking at the article or watching this video back, what is your definition of digital inclusion? What does that look like in a perfect world?
So it's an interesting one. So we started out with trying to communicate on what digital inclusion is in a really easy way. You've got things like Hemingway nine, which help you to do that sort of stuff. But digital inclusion itself as a term is quite exclusive. What does it really mean? For us in Essex, it's the three A's. So it's access, affordability and adoption of skills. DSET have recently kind of launched their digital inclusion action plan. And they have a further one, which kind of focuses on motivation, which is definitely fair. And that kind of motivation piece also links to choice, which is an interesting thing when we're desperately trying to push for digital first because it saves money and stuff like that. So I suppose the difficulty around digital inclusion is one size doesn't and never will fit all. And most of the time, at best, it will just fit many. So we need to think about, you know, preparing for digital first, yes. And so we can save on the majority of people who want to go digital if we support them well. But then we need to spend the money, some of that money that we've saved on the people that don't. And it should be about choice. So I struggle seeing banks close and I struggle seeing, you know, becoming a cashless society and so on, because it's taking away that fundamental human kind of thing around wanting to be able to choose what we do and how we do it. And so, yeah, accessibility and inclusion also are not the same thing. And I bang on about this all the time. And because we make the assumption that people come to apps, services with a level of digital skill. And even in professions, you mentioned briefly about small businesses. It was the same when I was in higher education. It was the same when I worked for KPMG. There was the assumption that you would come into this and you would know how to do these things. And one of the biggest things that I've kind of picked up in this space around accessibility and inclusion being used wrongly in my, from my perspective around being interchangeable, is that accessibility is around, can you make the screen bigger? And can you, you know, make the words brighter or all of those things, which are really, really important. But if a person doesn't have the level of skill required to even turn on a device or get to the point where they can see your website, that means that that service is not inclusive. And a piece of work that I'm doing at the moment is specifically focused on the NHS app and using the Essential Digital Skills Framework for Work and Life, where I've been able to kind of work with the lead NHS app designers and say, how many of the essential digital skills do you need? Can you pinpoint them? And, you know, it's a difficult tool, even for somebody like me. He was a digital excluded occasionally. And it requires over half of the skills for life and skills for work. So we've made an assumption that we've created an accessible tool, that people have the devices to be able to access it. And there are some stats floating around which show you that it was designed initially for web. But most people use the native tool. But the native tool means that your device that you use, your mobile, needs to have at least four years of updates on it, which means it's kind of quite expensive and it prices people out of the market. So that I'm really keen on people understanding that there is a very clear definition in this space between accessibility and inclusion. So when we are putting forward new apps and services and we're trying to go digital first, yes, accessibility. But we also need to think about, if we put that out there, what support do we need to put in place in local communities to make sure that we can upskill people to use that service? And it's like housing applications and all of this stuff, actually really difficult to do. And right across the board, you will see community volunteering services and charities delivering additional support because we have neglected the fact that accessibility and inclusion are different.
Yeah, I echo some great points made there, Jess. And I was sort of smiling when you mentioned about, like, you know, some of the complexities, that it's all in the detail, isn't it? Like, there's something ironic about being the chairman of a tech company and I struggled this week to verify my identity using an online platform because of the sheer complexity of the security checks that were there. And I'm a very digitally savvy person and it still took me a good 15 minutes or whatever. And I was willing to overcome some of the challenges because I'm the sort of person that I am with the sort of skills I've got. But I was sitting there thinking, even a quite experienced manager might struggle with some aspects of this verification process when it's asking me to scan a QR code and things like that. And it makes the assumptions that everyone knows what a QR code is.
Exactly.
And I'm thinking to myself, well, I know, but that's a big assumption to make. Anyway, I don't want to take us slightly off topic, but I was also interested in your point about cashless society that you just mentioned as well, because with my business head on and what I see going across economically, the wider world, I think that if the drive, if I can put it that way, towards a cashless society might have a huge amount of unintended consequences. Not deliberate consequences, but the unintended consequences of who it might exclude and the cost to certain groups in society as well, I think, could be massive. I think we should resist a cashless society, actually. But that's just my view.
Yeah, absolutely.
But these are all big challenges, aren't they, around this whole equality kind of agenda? But I want to ask you a bit more of a sort of focus question now, really, about partnership and what it means to you, really. Because as I said by way of the introduction, I think you're someone who naturally forms partnerships and makes connections. And I think you're particularly brilliant at it, actually. And I'm interested in you sharing with anybody listening to this or reading the write-up of this discussion later, what your sort of definition of an effective partnership that matters really is? What do you look for? What do you define as a really good partnership? Because I think if we're going to tackle some of these topics, as you mentioned again at the start, Jess, we're going to need to do it together, aren't we? When the more we join together, the better. But there's a particular skill involved in that, isn't it? And what's your approach to partnership? And in a resource constrained world, you know, what matters to you in partnership?
So there's a really lovely quote that I go back to a lot from Simon Sinek around, "Are you really listening or just waiting for your turn to speak?" So when I'm considering partnerships, I have to think about what is, what's my objective? But what's the potential partner's objective as well? And what brings us as close to a win-win as possible? And a lot of what's drawn out in the conversations around potential partnerships is from really listening, listening and taking notes and trying to kind of work out what I will bring or they will bring, all of that sort of stuff. So a good example of this was we had a GP who called us up from an amazing place called Landon GP Surgery. And she's very progressive. And she also knows her residents incredibly well. And she said, "I want to be able to kind of bring them on this digital journey with us, but I don't have the resources to be able to do that. We want more people to be able to access the online consultations that we're running and the NHS app in general to, you know, check in with appointments and things. What do we do?" And she said, "I've got a small space and maybe we could run something in that small space. It's not used and we could do something there." So anyway, rolling on down the line, we managed to pull together through Social Value, a space that's delivered entirely for free. And we had Mighty, who are our contractors for furniture and things like that, who through Social Value provided them with the furniture. And we provided with them laptops and laptop locks. We're all closing the Digital Divide Programme that we got some COVID recovery funding from. We had local apprentices going and painting the space so they could live paint it and get the experience. And we even had paint donated from Social Value as well. So partnership is about really intently listening and hearing what's said. What are the issues? What are the pain points? And what do you need as much as what do they need? How close can we get to win-win? But I think the proof in the pudding is, you know, are they happy with that programme that we've run? And so far, yes. So that's a good thing. So I think I kind of look at the difficulties that I have and then think to myself, who is it that I know that can help me with this thing? And just start the conversation from there. But organisations that have a really clear understanding of people come first, for me, that's very, very important.
Yeah, echo that. The power of listening, 100%.
Which is, it's great because you've kind of segued into the next question. So I'm going to ask you something slightly different, really. And what I'm picking up from what you're saying, Jess, about, you know, the listening aspect and how people connect and understand their communities and can see the challenges and see that for what it really is, you know, whether it's access or it's inclusion. I know you're right, they're very distinct things that can often be confused. Do you think, given the networks that you work in and your experience today, do you think in the UK or certainly, you know, in the circles we've moved in, that leadership needs a lot of help in this space? Because I think the unintended consequences, as Jamie referred to earlier on, some decisions can be made around digital, you know, whether it's platforms, whether it's, you know, being digital first, whatever that means, you know, cashless. Do you think that UK leaders per se need greater input and better levels of understanding of the impact that making us decisions and how that's going to make a difference to people's lives? Where do you see that? What would be, if you could wave a, if you could do anything to solve that problem, what would you do?
Oh, I've got a few. I'm just writing them down so I remember them. And so absolutely, there is a bit of an issue there. As human beings, we protect ourselves from all of the woes that could potentially impact us. And we live in a bubble, a very carefully curated bubble. And it's not until that bubble is burst by something like COVID that we go, oh! And so obviously, COVID happened. And then we suddenly realised that millions of kids across the UK didn't have a device. And we had to sort that problem out. And it creates like a precedent. That said, I am, you know, proud to be the Digital Inclusion Ambassador for Hot Topics, which is an amazing C-suite community. And I've done a panel recently around digital inclusion. And I've had a conversation with some amazing C-suite execs. And the general kind of thing when I kind of say digital inclusion, oh, but my website's accessible. So then I say, well, that's great. But there are one in four people in the UK that aren't online, so they're not going to see it. And then it's about kind of saying, okay, well, actually, there's an opportunity cost for you here, right? That you're not meeting. And if you want to sell more products, then you should be investing in getting people online and supporting people through that process. If you want more diversity and equality and inclusion, then you need to make sure that the people that you're trying to recruit from that particular talent pool can actually access your application process. 90% of all jobs are online, probably more now. So there's a bit around the education piece, absolutely. And the way in which you have conversations with C-suites generally has to focus on output, I think, and, you know, potential profit. So the opportunity cost is a good one to have that conversation around. And how I do it in Essex, it's something that I'm working with the LGA on, to see if we can kind of create a best practice around. We have a process in Essex where we have sort of council member actions, which is quite long, bulky, hefty documentation. It has to be robust around any new process, project, programme or sort of policy change that we want to put in place, that we need to put in front of our council members. And part of that process includes something called an Equality and Comprehensive Impact Assessment documentation. And I thought to myself, hang on, we've got all these protected characteristics. We're not adding digital inclusion and can I get it in there? Because I was finding I was firefighting a lot. And we had like, a good example was, we decided that we wanted to create a booking system online for using our recycling centres. But we didn't think about all of the people that don't have an email address and don't have a computer or all of those things and how that might exclude them from that process. So I had to kind of jump in. And one of my lovely comms team actually alerted me to it. And I jumped in, had a conversation with libraries who are great at this. And I said, right, okay, how do we get around the email problem? Okay, we have a contact centre, we can put that in. How do we get around, they won't be able to be emailed the certificates, say, this is the time you've booked your slot. Okay, they write it down, they take it with them, the contact centre is informed and so on. So it was possible, but it cost a lot of my time out of a week trying to sort that out. So I wanted to kind of, you know, put the flames out before they got to the point where it burnt the whole house down and worked with our amazing Equalities team, who were very open to this and said, I'd love to put something in there around digital inclusion to get people thinking about the potential impacts they need to mitigate. And so I got the Digital Exclusion Risk Indicator, which is lariat award-winning, I have to mention, otherwise my boss would kill me. And added into this so that anyone who's kind of looking at particular localities that they're working with could say, right, so that's the digital exclusion risk here. Also, we need to focus on this. And then what that's meant is that I get to review these ECIA's coming through. And even if it's kind of fallen through the gaps a bit, I can go, oh, have you thought that this may be an issue? Get in contact, we can sort of link you up to the nearest community volunteering service who's delivering this support, with the hope that we put the fire out before it starts. But the next best step to that is something that I'm really proud of working with Emma Weston, who's the CEO of Digital Unite, around her programme called Inspire. And it's actually designed to teach commissioners and people kind of making those policy decisions in local government about digital inclusion. And sort of only 40 minutes to complete. And then once you've completed that and you really understand how that impacts your work, you can become a digital champion. And you can pledge to be a digital champion either internally, which is just as important as externally sometimes when you think about it, but also out in the community. So that's something that I think is really important. I'd love that to be centrally funded, if we could, to make sure that more local authorities get access to it and the impact that that can have.
Awesome. I'm just unpacking a lot of what you said there, Jess. That was absolutely awesome. And I think, I think you'll probably agree that a lot of the way we tackle some of these challenges, it's all about people, isn't it? And we've mentioned systems and how we take a systematic approach to tackling some of these issues earlier. But I always go back to the fact that it's all about people. And I'd be interested in your thoughts on, given that real change, when it comes to changing systems or changing the world for the better, it's all about people and people can be complex, people can resist change. So this is a question that's a chance for us to be controversial, I suppose, and be quite provocative and say, what are the blockers? What are the real challenges around? What do you encounter in, what's your view on how to, what are the blockers, so to speak? And how do you overcome some of those challenges? When you're talking to people about addressing some of these challenges that you've been raising so far? Because it is all about winning people over to sort of support missions like this sometimes. And how do you go about that?
So there's kind of two tiers with blockers. There's the sort of direct group that we work with on the ground, so that's people. And I'll keep that separate to the blockers that might be in local government and business and things like that. And I have a real difficulty sometimes working out why other people don't think like me. I really struggle with it. I think, what is it? And I, you know, I've asked people before, am I unusual? And when people call me up and we have conversations, I've had people say to me, well, you're not like the usual person that we would speak to in local authority. And I think, really? It's silo working. It does mine nothing. And it's one of the biggest blockers that's kind of really difficult to shift. It's based on the fact that we're not very good at kind of talking to each other. And I kind of, again, I got pulled up on this in an event that was in recently, where somebody said, no, we did talk to each other. But afterwards, I kind of spoke to the person, I said, yeah, but you're in tech. So you talk to the techie guy. You're not feeding that up or down to anybody else, are you? And he went, no. So it's that, it's the silo working. And I've kind of posted up about this before. I think that the best, most powerful kind of role that we have in local government at the moment that we overlook is the connector. So it's that, what you've mentioned earlier, it's no wrong door. So if you come to me on LinkedIn and you ask me something, because you've seen my profile, and I don't know what that is or that's not me, I do my very best to find out who it is. That grows my knowledge. And it also gives somebody an opportunity to kind of open a door for bigger things. That could be great for us as a county council. But I think I'm not the norm in that way. I'm trying to change that a little bit more and just create more of an innovation path. And there's some really cool things that you can do around breaking down those barriers. We did, so Digital Essex ran a really great innovation event where we had lots of CEOs kind of join the conversation from all across Essex, all of our districts and unitaries. And one of the things that came out from that, we would kind of, we designed the session to really talk about innovation and, you know, what can we use with digital and all that? And the biggest thing that came out of it was, we don't talk to each other. So I've just sat next to someone in Moldova who's done this thing that I've been trying to do for two years. You spent a bit of money on it and I didn't know. And I could just get your business case, sorry, that's the truth. And I could get this business case and just run with it. I said, right, so that is an ideation funnel. And I don't know if you guys have heard of this, but I went on a really great away day, I love a good away day, with a guy called Robbie White, who I used to work with in university, who runs like the kind of innovation side at Forbes Mazarz. What was Mazarz, it's now Forbes Mazarz. And he talked us through this ideation funnel, which basically meant that anyone in Essex County Council can come up with an idea. So they can say, God, this process is doing my head and it's not working. I need this. They can run it through the ideation funnel and say, this is what I need. And they can say, oh, somebody else has done that before. And actually, that's in process two or three up from me. And it's gone through this first of funding or cost or, you know, benefit or whatever. But I wanted to kind of go a bit one step further and say, right, well, you know, attach a business case. If it's been done, share it and then everybody can talk about it. For some reason, it seems like a new thing. But I did quiz UK central government, I can't remember the name of the guy, I can picture his face, at this event that I went to, I said, are you guys doing that or a version of it? And they said, they are. And I thought, well, why is that not funneling down to everybody else then? It just, and it's the same with AI. I think what we're not doing, and Jamie, if you know someone that can build this, I don't have any money, by the way, so just put this out there, you can have it. And I posted up about it, is that we need like an AI Use Cases for Good Wiki, like a community that kind of share the things that they've done, whether it's failure, because that's good as well, or, you know, what's worked? What were the prompts? How did you do it? And I took it to a guy called Dr Matthew Forshaw from the Alan Turing Institute. And he was like, yeah, really good idea. But what I wanted him to go is, yeah, I'll build it. So that kind of thing, that's important because it gives us a place to kind of come together around a thing and see what's worked before. Because if we're in a race to get things done, and we are, we always run out of time for this, that and the other, that kind of opportunity is the thing that breaks down those silos and connects the dots and joins things together. And and hopefully in a roundabout way, I've, I've answered that, but. Blockers can be people who don't understand what you're doing and you have to bring them on your journey with you. Whether that's through statistics or, um, you know, visuals or storytelling, that's one of the most powerful things in this space is the storytelling. So great that we've got nine hundred people through this digital help find a platform. But what difference did it make to John, Sarah, Joe? That kind of thing. Um. So that's the, the, the business side. And then you've got residents and the blockers for residents are, you've mentioned them already, I'm scared of it. And I'm hearing bad things about it all the time. I'm stupid is another one. So if you get people. That come to you and say, I'm stupid, I should be able to do it, it doesn't work. Best way to get around that is to show them the essential digital skills framework and how many skills the NHS app requires. And say, that's not your fault, is it? And they go, oh, no. Um. So yeah, there's, there's that kind of two tiered approach, but. It's, it is an interesting one to try and gauge. Who, who is it that you're going to meet today that can potentially try and block your stuff?
Yeah, absolutely. And then what strategies can you deploy to maybe overcome that? And I think you're particularly effective at that, which is why. Uh, I raised that as a discussion point. There was so much in what you just said, by the way, that I know our team are going to love to pull out as quotes. I mean, I mean, one for me was just the statement you said when you had a really good away day. That's not a sentence I hear very.
Uh, but I chose it, right? So I, no one put it on for me. I set it up, so I knew it was going to be good.
Absolutely. And just an observation before I hand back to Mark to ask the next sort of question is, um, from the outside looking in. Because I've got to know a few of your colleagues in the last year as well across, across Essex. Um, I would say that whilst I'm sure you've got many problems and you're sure you've got the same sort of challenges as many other councils. Uh, I'm detecting, I feel from the outside looking in, there is something a little bit different about the kind of people that work in your council and your organisation. To what I see in other local authorities and other councils and things across the country. And I can't quite define it, but you're, you've got something different that I think is quite special, actually, because. It's probably no accident that you're there. And also through you, I got introduced to what is without a doubt the best library manager I think I've ever met in my life. Jay, Jay is just, Jay Brown is just. I tell you what, if you could replicate him across the country. I think, I think, uh, I think my team will be missing a trick, actually, if when they write up an article based on this conversation, if they don't call it the only way is Essex, they're missing a trick, right? Um, there, there's, there's something special going on, I think, which is, which is why we're having this conversation, of course. Because I think if we can share some of your insights and the practice that you're, you're leading, even if it's not perfect. And even if, uh, like you said, it's about sharing sometimes the things that don't work as much as sharing the things that do. Um, I think you're brilliant at being open and sharing these insights with other people. And I think a lot. For anybody watching this, I think, um, it, it would be well worth tracking down some of the work going on in your area than what you're doing. Because I think there's some real lessons for the wider country there as well. But, um, so thanks for that. It was brilliant listening to you then. Um, Mark, I'll hand back to you.
I, I've just purchased myself an ideation funnel, uh, online while she was talking. Um, in fact, I went for two, I'm going to pass on to Jamie.
Thank you.
I'm given that we know, um, and Jess, you'll know this super well, um, we know that. Basic digital skills in terms of, um, health equality, in terms of poverty, in terms of life outcomes. You know, those that can access services, those that can shop online, get best value and all those kinds of things at that very basic level. And it is quite. Well, we say it's relatively basic for some, it's not obviously. How do you, I guess, how do you drive forward solutions that don't accidentally create a, a bigger divide?
So I would go back to the ECIA process. I would go back to the conversations that I have around. And I try and do this as regularly as I can. So if I dip into LinkedIn and I, I see. Like the, the healthcare industry around apps is a really interesting one for anyone who's kind of looking at this space around digital inclusion. And there are so many healthcare apps that pop up and rightfully so. And actually, some of them are driven by XGP's and stuff like that, but. That's only as good as the, the processes that they have around this. So I try and dip in and say, well, this is really great. Could we have a conversation about essential digital skills framework, accessibility versus inclusion? And are you thinking that your, your app is, if it's native, have you thought about the people who might be excluded by? You know, some of the really important rigorous, uh, like GDPR data protection stuff that you have to write into your, your programming in your system. They might not be able to access it because they haven't got them in phone. Um, and the often, often the response is, I haven't thought of that. And it's not just that, it's, it's, you know, kids in, um, kids in care who come out of care and who have nothing. And these groups need to be able to access their past history and all of the things, these wonderful borough boxes and things like this that. Um, not borough boxes, something else, but, um, it's the systems that are designed for them. But there's no kind of forethought of, you come from a place, you know, people who've left prison as well. And you, you just sort of chucked into a system where everything's digital, you didn't have access inside. To a device or the skills or the support. And then suddenly you've got to do all of these things and. It, it just, the mind boggles. So, yeah, I think that, that's, that's the bit that I, I kind of struggle a little bit with is. We have to think of these things first, put them right at the very front of the process. And to stop the sort of difficulties that occur halfway down the line. Um. Yeah, that's like a constant for me. So, yeah, healthcare industry is, is one that's doing that at the moment. And, and then, you know, anything around trying to get people a job or all of this stuff, like applicant tracking systems. I mean, I can't navigate that and I'm, I'm not digitally excluded and I used to work as a recruiter. So. Super tough, but it, it's about that distinction between accessibility and inclusion. And what can we toggle on and off? And who can we tackle this with? So those stats that I mentioned earlier, that I managed to get hold of. That are out there and they're national and I want nationally to really understand if I can take this to all of my digital inclusion bodies and say. Right, we know that ninety-three percent of people. Are accessing the NHS app through a mobile device. It was divi- developed as a, as a, um, web app rather than a native app. Where are the telcos? You know, when we're advertising and saying you can change up your phone every, every three months or whatever, where do those phones go? And how do we get into the, into the hands of people who need them to just be able to do that thing, that one thing of having better access to healthcare? And because getting access to a phone is really difficult, getting access to a laptop is hard, but a phone is more difficult than it shouldn't be. So. That would be what I'd love to do next is kind of have that challenge of, I don't think we're doing enough.
I agree. Wonderful, uh, observations there again, Jess. I'm going to ask you something a little bit different now, but to do storytelling. And, uh, I actually, just earlier this week, a good friend of mine, who's a, a very well renowned, uh, executive coach, a chap called Colin Brown. Um, he posted this, um, article on LinkedIn about if you want to be effective in terms of doing an elevator pitch, he had this quote about. It said, tell me a story, then show me the money. And, and I thought that was quite an interesting thing because the point he was making is that, uh, anybody who spent quite a bit of time in boardrooms knows that you can go in there with. A fantastic business case, you can have all your stats there. But senior executives tend to need a story that they can sell to their shareholders or the people that are backing them as well. So you've kind of got to have the two things, haven't you? You've got to have the data, but you've got, got to be able to have a, to tell a story as well that brings it to life. And I think as human beings, since we've been telling stories and since we could draw on cave walls, I'm pretty sure we're going to be telling stories for the. Rest of the time that humans are walking around as well. Now, where that relates to my question for you is. Have you got any examples of where you've used that sort of approach where the store, the stories about, uh, like the examples you mentioned with having a wiki earlier of, of all these great examples of what people are doing? Have you got any thoughts on the power of stories and how, how impactful they can be in terms of unlocking support and funding for, from others where. They need that story to convince people, so to speak. I mean, what's your view on storytelling around this topic? I know it's a bit of an abstract question, but what you, what do you?
No, not at all. And it's fundamental. It's fundamental to any programme that we put on as the local authority and any sort of process procedure that impacts people. We're focused on, you know, the qualitative and the quantitative, but really it's the stories that, um, sort of. You see written into council member speeches or, um, anything that trying to, you know, if you're trying to bring somebody on a journey with you, the stories matter most. Um, so a good example for me was, we're very lucky, we've got councillor McKinley behind us around digital inclusion. And she was very keen for us to be out in the community and creating new community digital hubs. She put up some funding, uh, which is called local community funding, which most council members will have access to, small amount of funding that you can do stuff with. And we created these, um, community hubs out in Brentwood. And she came along with us to a launch to a local church, which is Hutton Parish Church. And she met a lady there who has gone through some incredibly difficult circumstances that was domestic violence and all this sort of awful stuff. And the one thing that she was asking for is, is I need a device for my daughter. She's very clever. And she stands for the opportunity of having a scholarship with, I think it was Cambridge. But I can't afford a device, I can't get a one. We gave her one and she's doing great things. And that is the thing that councillor McKinley comes back to when she talks about digital inclusion now. And it also then unlocked funding. From other boroughs and districts around that local community fund. So that, it, it gives you that power and potential. And another thing that I will kind of come back to is, is social value. I have a love hate relationship with social, social value. I think it's very important. I think it, it has the potential to really unlock the power of good for good sake. Whilst meeting ESG commitments for bigger organisations and all of that sort of stuff, but. It's generally not done very well. Social value, the words don't really mean much to anybody outside of local government and sometimes not even then. And we're struggling a little bit to really measure the impact of what we can do with it because there's quite low accountability. And that is something that I'm really trying to kind of focus my attention on. Because right at the very beginning of my journey as a digital inclusion lead, I said. This has the potential to be a power couple, digital inclusion and social values, like the, what would have been like the brangelina of like. Twenty twenty or whatever, before everything happened. Why is nobody talking about it? Why have the councillors fallen out of love with it? And it's this. It's that communication about what it is, what it does, why it's important. And how you can create an input and an output. So you can have social value in, that does all this cool stuff for free, that's all contracted. And you can have social value output as well. So run, run somebody through a community digital service. What is the output in terms of social value that this person has now put back into the community through buying more goods or. Being able to access healthcare quicker and not calling a phone number and all of this stuff. That, I think if we can unlock that. Is so powerful. And then all of the issues, like we have a, a difficulty around the F word in local government, funding, by the way. Um. We never, we never, you know, we've just got a budget out, there was no mention of. Digital inclusion in there. We've got a digital inclusion innovation fund that hopefully is going to come out from DC for twenty twenty six. But, you know. There is potential to do a lot for nothing or for less. Whilst getting all of the things that we need for a very impactful society that focuses on people and planet over profit. But we need that bit sorting out. So I'm working on it quietly in the background. And. But yeah, it's, that sort of thing keeps me up at night. I don't, yeah. But again, it's like a, a chunky thing for me to, to get my, my mix on, so.
Yeah.
Get in touch, you know, give me a call if you.
I don't, I don't want to steal from Mark's next discussion point, but I, I.
Oh, I just want to say as well, um, Jimmy Cockerton from Impact Advantage is the most incredible, well, one of the most incredible human beings. He is doing something amazing around social value that really unlocks this qualitative and quantitative piece. Follow him if you want to see what the impact of this thing could really do. I met him yesterday at the Better Business Act celebrations with Mary Portis. She's invested in this whole concept, so follow his stuff. He's awesome.
Love it. I shall, I shall. And before, I don't want to steal Mark's thunder with his next question, uh, which kind of might touch upon this a little bit, but. And it goes back to the storytelling thing a little bit as well, in the sense that I think that sometimes to get the support of the people we need with some aspects of this, you've got to talk their language and meet them where they, where they are. So you mentioned funding being tight there. And of course, I spend a lot of my time in corporate boardrooms and with big businesses and. Um, it's about translating this sometimes to them. And where I'm quite passionate about this is that whilst. There's lots of values driven reasons that we can talk about and that me and you were probably in, everyone on this call is probably very driven by. Um, there's also a real commercial metric around this because my contention is that. If you look at the economic multiplier effect of digital inclusion and actually getting people to be properly included in our society and in the broadest sense of the term. Well, it's one of the best investments a country can ever make. Um, it's almost like, how else can you? You know, you can't, how else could you create fifty billion dollars of like, uh, economic impact with just a hundred million pounds invested or whatever, you know? Mixing up currencies there, but you know what I mean? Um, it's like the best investment you could probably ever make. And so that to me isn't a problem. It's a market. It's a massive opportunity. To, uh, and I, and I'd like more businesses to understand the economic value rather than just thinking it's a charitable thing. Um, because all floats can, all boats can float higher if we get this right. And, and so I, I think there's something in that that I think sort of needs. A, a different kind of approach with maybe a different story that needs to be told. I don't know, but, uh, maybe, maybe a subject for another time, but Mark, I'm stealing your thunder.
Yeah, no, I, I was just, just about to what you're saying though, just, I, I think there's enough, there's been enough time and evidence now and impact. Uh, you know, I think we're not far off being able to describe what the downstream benefits are of digital inclusion. Um, and, and you know, and, and I think it's those things, Jamie, who immediately will turn heads because. If we know that somebody is digitally included and their life story and the impact on them as an individual. Um, has meant that they've required less input from services and, you know, and, uh, and long-term unemployment and, you know, and actually being economically active and. Education and all of those, all of those things we know. Um, immediately skyrocket if you've got a good base level of access to technology, but, but the skills to use it properly. But anyway, um, just digging back into, uh, the, the plan, which has kind of gone a little bit weird, but we'll, we'll, we'll carry on. Um, so it's about, I suppose, and this, you'll, you'll be at the sharp end of this, I think, Jess, in many ways. It's about how you ensure that, that it's limited to pots of funding that you have, the F word. Um, don't just deliver kind of novelty activity and bite, bite sized kind of elements for politicians to kind of quote. What, what about those sustainable long-term outcomes? Well, you know, what, what's your thoughts around that?
I love this one. So, um, this is something that I try and really bake in to everything that I do. And I am a like legacy nerd. I, I love to kind of really create programmes that are lasting long-term. And create opportunities around sustainability through very lit- little funding if I can do it. Um, so the way that I approach anything around digital inclusion is, is really looking at the gaps. So who is it in the community that needs us as much as we need them? And you can look at groups like, um, people seeking asylum. Uh, who come into the UK and have absolutely nothing, everything taken away. Um, but they don't come to the UK necessarily with no skills at all. And you work with. Organisations like Screenshare and, and, you know, that are focused on this particular group. And we ran an amazing programme, which was actually recognised by the United Nations Development, uh, Programme, their Digital Inclusion Playbook. And which kind of with, um, North East Essex Digital Access Support Team in Colchester. Where we, I sort of said, I want to work with this group because I think they need us as much as we need them. We, we could train them up as digital champions. And then they can support you guys in the community through building, you know, building up your network. And lived experience is super powerful in this space. There's no point in me turning up and going, oh, I understand what you're going through. Do a bit, but I haven't lived it. Um. And they, they sort of basically trained up this group of amazing people seeking asylum to become digital champions. Volunteer out in the community, get something on their CV. So if and when they receive their rights remain, they're not destitute. Like, it completely makes sense to me. But what we also found with this group is that they were trained engineers. Incredible experience that we just are not thinking about or unlocking because we see them as a problem. Rather than a potential solution. So. that's important for me. Young people, again, a hugely overlooked group. Um. We have an issue around considering young people as a resource. Now, I've worked with young people for for you know, quite a long time. I'm trying not to give away my age, although I mentioned the word time I got to the other day and that gave it away. Um. You know, and and what happened after Covid and the fact that the groups of young people would have had access to, you know, a pizza job and a, you know, all of this sort of stuff to get some of the skills and experience that they need throughout life, literally dropped off a cliff. We also don't have enough volunteers. So I'm kind of looking at kind of joining these two things together. You can do inter intergenerational programs, things that break down barriers through this kind of work. And but look at the groups that need you as much as you need them. So what's the gap? Um, can't give away too much at the moment because obviously I want to do this thing, scale it up and then allow people to kind of jump in and do the same thing. But to me, that's the bit that we missed the point on. Um. And I've run some amazing programs like Hackathons of Great with Young People. We did a program where we had um a recruitment campaign for social care. And I just got this amazing group of young people together who did want to work in social care. And I said, have at it. And they were brilliant. There's like no holds barred. Look, we know the job's hard. Why are all these people on this page smiling? What? Don't don't lie to us. Like, we get enough of that outside of this space, you know, tell us what the truth is. Come up with a reel and show us like, you know, this is what it's like working with John today, or John's had a difficult day today, or I've got to take him for this appointment at the hospital, but tomorrow we're going for ice cream in the park. And it was incredible, so insightful and impactful. We ripped up what we were doing and we changed it around what they said. And lo and behold, we managed to recruit some more young people. So it's that, it stop thinking of your difficulties and start thinking about groups of people that you can connect with that can enable you to do the thing that you need to do by by thinking outside the box. Oh, God, that's very local government. By thinking about um who needs you as much as as you need them.
Awesome. I love that. You've just mentioned something when you were speaking then, Jess, you used the term scale it up. Um, which relates to what I want to dig into next a little bit, really, because any of us who've been doing what we do for a period of time will have seen uh a multitude of projects, some of which don't work out as they intended, and sometimes too many projects that can't really scale. Um, I I was once speaking at the uh at the Bet Show and I started my presentation by saying, wow, a room full of a hundred thousand solutions looking for a problem. And 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 I wasn't, I wasn't invited back to speak again, actually, funnily enough, but um I, the point I was making was that a lot of people think they've got great ideas and there's nothing wrong with having a very small, you know, something that doesn't doesn't scale necessarily, if that's what it's intending to do. But I see a lot of projects where the ambition is to scale. And they might get some backing with the idea that we're backing you. So this idea might be replicated more widely. But it doesn't work out that way. And I was in a meeting earlier this week where the term hyperlocal was being banded around. And I thought that's an interesting phrase. And I'm still trying to work out what hyperlocal means. But what I hope it doesn't mean is we have an industry coming across the country with some backing from various government departments that can't scale anywhere else because I'm not sure that's necessarily the best lesson or the best use of money, especially in money constrained times. So as someone who is, you know, uh very experienced in this area and and doing some awesome work, what's your view on scaling projects and and how do you identify something that can scale? So you look at something, you go, actually, this could this could be a lesson much wider, you know. What's your thought process around that, Jess?
So for me, that goes back to the people that I'm working with. So if you think about young people as a group, they're everywhere. They're all over the UK. People seeking asylum are all over the UK. So I know that if I create something in Essex around that group and it works, I can pick it up and I can give it to people in Rotherham and give it to people in Roffishshire if I want to. There's no barrier there for me because I've created a thing around a system that's there and exists all across the UK. Um, but yeah, scalability is an interesting one, hyperlocal, place based, all of this stuff, you know. I'm I'm a, don't just do good, do it loud and do it big. Pointless if you just do it here and keep it to yourself and then, you know, who are you really helping? Um, so, yeah, I I kind of take it back to uh that might be again where I'm a little bit different. I see the fact that I'm in a brilliant, a brilliant position here in Essex because I'm not in competition with anybody else. I'm not a business like a Google that an organization could look at or a local authority could look at and go, how on earth can I work with them? Um, I'm in a county council. I'm not in competition with with Norfolk next door or Kent next door. I'm just Essex, but I can lift my head above the parapet and go, we've done this in Essex and I want to share it with you guys. Take it.
Hmm.
Um, not about, you know, I generally try and create things anyway that don't cost a huge amount because you know, funding, effort. Um, so, yeah, like with the stuff that I'm doing, you've got like um National Apprenticeships Network, you've got um various groups that support people seeking asylum. So you can literally lift and shift something. Interestingly, one of the biggest bits of pushback that I got around the people seeking asylum program was worse. We trained them up and they they're in Colchester and we lose them like, you know, what's what's the value of that? I said, well, we keep in contact with them, which I know we can. And they moved to Reading. I call my buddies in Reading. And so heads up, we've got five digital champions. They love it.
Yeah, just I just want to interject there, Jess, but you just reminded me whilst I'm thinking about it, there's a wonderful, uh the chairman of a charity that I'm on uh was talking about that very point you're making about skills there and somebody saying, well, what if they leave when we train them up? And the chairman of my charity came out with, I think it's somebody else's quote. But he said, well, yeah, if we train them up, they could leave. But what if you don't train them up and they stay?
Yeah, exactly, exactly.
I thought that was a great perspective on it.
Yeah.
Sorry to interject.
No, no, that's perfect. I'm sure Richard Branson said something on this.
Yeah, I think it possibly was.
You know, it it it's a loyalty thing, but there's no loss there to me in us spending a bit of funding or, you know, I'm I'm trying to do this on a on a shoestring anyway, training people up, but then deliver better outcomes on a national scale for the economy. That's not a loss to me. So you know, I I don't I don't understand that. I almost gave away what I'm going to try and say at the end then. So I'll try to not say that. Um, but yeah, it's it's a, it's an interesting.
Yeah.
Just think bigger is is what I don't. Lots of people that I I work with end up in the weeds.
Yeah.
We need to think bigger and because I want Essex to be seen like that. And you pointed out that we've got some really great people that work with us in Essex and work for Essex. And that's why I want us to be seen as 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 different, like, you know, different isn't necessarily a bad thing.
No, and I think, again, a credit to you and the work that you and your colleagues are doing, because I think you are an exemplar of that. And as I as I travel around, it's always really inspiring for me when I get to meet people who are thinking bigger in the way that you describe. Just last week, I had the privilege to be a a judge at a university competition. It was at the University of Staffordshire. And I met so many young people who were doing exactly that, Jess. They were thinking big. They'd looked at global problems. Not 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 local problems. They'd look, they'd come up with solutions and products and services that were almost investment ready, even though they're just just graduates just starting off. And they'd really thought bigger and connected across the globe. And I just thought, wow, you know. Um, because that's very much how Google work, for example. I mean, I I've learned a lot from studying Google, actually, and
Yeah.
uh and in my leadership sort of roles I have, I I now sort of ten X everything. Like, if I think I'm being ambitious, I think, well, hang on a minute, what would Google do? And I know that my colleagues at Google would go, that's nowhere near it. Think bigger, you know. Um, and so it's it's.
It's that, isn't it? Just just to kind of come back to that point that I I love, and I just want to kind of reinforce the fact that young people have yet to develop the cynicism that us lot have, right? So that that's a that's a big barrier for us. Um, we become cynical, we worry about failure. Young people don't have that instilled in them yet, and we need to harness that.
Oh, one hundred percent. I think I'm correct.
Opportunity.
Yeah.
Um, and sort of to mention something that was really cool that I had the, you know, the opportunity to witness, I I went and did um uh digital inclusion uh speech over at De Montfort University last year. And they had like an innovation day and they've got this organization in called Hable who are brilliant. What they're doing is is kind of upskilling staff to use power apps. I was like, oh, my God, this is great. So they had like a lady who is she's not your typical techie at all. I mean, I've worked in academia. I know what this place looks like. She was a um I don't remember what, maybe like a a science tutor or something. And she she kind of said to them, oh, this process is doing my head in my eye. I get all these students who kind of submit a thing and they're just saying, well, I can't do my homework because. So she went on this training, she created this power app and then it just, it was like this process in it goes this, 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 this gets rejected, that gets moved forward, done. That is how it should be. That for me is a real win. So again, there are pockets of really great best practice here. Need to share it more. That's the biggest thing for me. Share it. Don't, you know, don't keep it to yourself.
Yeah, hundred percent. And think big. And that comment you made about young people, I I totally echo. I I was once listening to the chief executive, uh as was then of the Eden Project. Who were who were surrounded um themselves with very experienced architects, builders and designers and things who were coming up with thousands of problems and reasons that were going to be challenges and things and all this. And he got rid of that team and replaced it with an entirely new team who were totally inexperienced. And when he was asked why he'd done it, his answer was because I needed to be surrounded by people who don't know that this can't be done.
Yeah, exactly. It's that mindset, isn't it?
Yeah, it's wonderful, wonderful. Anyway, Mark, over to you.
Jess, you touched on um um listening and collaboration. You've touched on collaboration a lot, in fact, but you talked about um listening and having an understanding of what's in it for both um kind of parties in that respect. So I just want to kind of maybe draw a little bit of that out in this next question, which is when you're looking for a potential collaboration um with a group or an individual. So what advice would you give when when somebody's seeking to collaborate better? And what is a successful collaboration? What's what's the hallmark of that? And you can walk away and go, yes, that was that was the right partner to do those things with.
Um, so I can give a really good example of a of a great uh collaboration. We have to use the word collaboration because partnership generally means you tie yourself to a contract. We don't do that. Uh, collaboration is much better. C word is good in this space. Um, so God, that's going to come out in the uh in the wash, isn't it? Um, so Barclays Digital Wings, um we've been working with them for quite some time and we have a new group and who are kind of working across Essex who are really kind of invested in what can we do in the local community, hyperlocal, place based. Um, and collaboration with them is brilliant because we literally say to them, okay, so you did that thing there, but we need it slightly tweaking for this space because it is different and there are nuances and this group need this a little bit more. And away they go because they get it and they go that they they understand that, you know, not every space that you go into is exactly the same, especially where we have morality and and that some of the the difficulties that can come up with that. And you might have an older generation or a younger generation or whatever. So they've been absolutely brilliant. And I think, especially in local government, your collaborations need to have as much flexibility baked in as possible. And really understanding that those nuances exist. And and again, kind of going back to that point of one size doesn't fit all. If at best it will fit many. And we want to be able to support as many people as we possibly can. So we do have to slightly tweak things. Um, but the the sort of concept for me is important around creating a good program around a particular thing that you can then tweak quite easily. So depending on, so if I want to create digital champions in a corporate that then train up their clients. Or I want to train, you know, create digital champions from people seeking asylum. The the concept is is very similar. You've got a good baseline and you have the opportunity to then tweak that to whatever the audience is. It goes back to that audience piece. So collaborations around um this particular space work really well if there's that underlying assumption that flexibility is part of that. Um, but also I generally tend to try and max out this whole thing around. I don't have any money. What can we do? So a good example of where that's worked was going back to that people seeking asylum group. The group were attending regularly Colchester Institute to go and learn English. I thought, well, what I don't want to do is pull them out. So I'll get no money to travel. So what can, who can I collaborate with? Um, and I approached Colchester Institute and I said, look, are you able to kind of accommodate some digital champions training in this space where they go to a their English lesson first maybe and then just come and use a space that's not being used by anyone else and actually wouldn't book that space out normally. And luckily, I asked the right questions and and that went really well. So yeah, I try and be as, no, it's not sneaky. It's just, you know, what can you get? Just ask the right questions is is important.
Hundred percent. You got to do that. Look, you've been incredibly generous with your time today, Jess. So um penultimate question is from me and then I'm going to hand over to Mark to wrap up with the killer final question.
Oh, God.
Um, but uh and and thanks, yeah, thanks for all of your time with this. I know you're a little bit, but um so question, penultimate question from me is around.